We're going to administer the oath of office to the not newly elected but re-elected three board members who were re-elected in November. And the first oath comes under section 228 of the Kentucky Constitution, which has been in effect in this state since 1792, the very first constitution. It's required of every person who's elected at any public office. The following oath is required. So Ms. Wilson, Ms. Hickel-Battle, Mr. Murray, if y'all would raise your hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth? And that you will be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you continue a citizen thereof? And that you will faithfully execute to the best of your ability the office of Russell County School Board Member according to law? And do you further solemnly swear or affirm that since the adoption of the present Constitution, that you, being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it? Nor have you sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons? Nor have you acted as a second in carrying such a challenge? Nor aided or assisted any person thus offending? So help you God. The following oath is required under KRS 160.170, and it's only for school board members. All right? Do you hereby state that you are eligible, under the law of the Commonwealth of Kentucky, to serve as a member of the Board of Education of Russell County, Kentucky? And that you will not, while serving as a member of such school board, become interested either directly or indirectly in any contract with or claim against the school board? And that you will not in any way influence the hiring or appointment of district employees except the hiring of the superintendent of schools or school board attorney? So help you God. All right. Congratulations. Thank you all.
This time you'll join me, who will say the place of allegiance, and Mr. Kenton is going to lead us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Kenton. I thank you for the opportunity to do this tonight. Heavenly Father, Lord, we come before you tonight with a humble heart. We know that this evening the planets will arise or align, and they say they call it the Star of Bethlehem. Help us to remember that wise men still follow you, God. We ask, Lord, that you bless us, bless this board. Help us to keep in our minds what we're here for. Lord, help us to make the decisions that are in the welfare and the benefit of those that we serve, the children, the parents of this district. We ask, Lord, that you remember those that are less fortunate than we are as we go through our day and through this season. Remind us of the sacrifice that you gave that we might give to others lovingly and without any thought of the blessings that we have. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Kevin.
Name of the meeting, the order? Roll call. This action is taken by calling each board member's name with a board member answer in presence. Mr. Murray?
Present.
Ms. Wilson?
Present.
Ms. Hickel-Battle?
Present.
Mr. Kazoo?
Present.
Ms. Wickerman?
Present.
All board members present.
Anyone have a comment to make before we start? Okay. Company Regional College and Workforce Center of Construction.
Okay, board members, at this time we'll need to send everybody some pictures and stuff that's going to show.
since the last time I've done this. I gave everybody a written copy of kind of a progress update, what's going on. I won't go through it in detail, just kind of go through the pictures I've had now, but after you look over that, if you have questions, feel free to ask. Okay, the first picture there, if you pass by a nice little bit, you've seen windows going in, that's inside the industrial maintenance. Of course, everybody didn't issue, we had the last contractor, but new contractor's been on board, and we got material there, and windows are just about complete, about to get the building totally closed in if you've been by. So that's inside of industrial maintenance. That is the industrial maintenance shop area. As you can see, paints on the walls, overhead doors are in. You see all the ductwork being painted, the timber lights are in there. Hopefully, in the next little bit, we'll start getting apartment lighting in, but getting all that painting and all the piping and everything done overhead, so you can see that bright white color of it makes it real light up out there in that industrial maintenance area.
And this is the corner of the building there, and that has the two, the main corner, the faces of the road and parking lot. That's that area that's going to light up through there that will really be tremendous. So really sharp at night with the lighting controls we've got. The whole idea is that lights up at night, so people are driving by, they can see the kind of robotics and the technology that's going on in this facility.
This is the IT classroom, that's on that upper level. You can see the work area there, there's, you see the metal stud frame there that we get drywall on it in the next few days.
Already done.
Did they get it this week?
No.
I know they said, she took these, I think Thursday or Friday, so they've done that the last few days.
I was in there this morning, and it's cleaned up and everything.
I think that she took these Thursday, so, but you can see that same area, all the overhead is painted, everything's starting to wrap up in that IT classroom area. And again, all of this ceiling in this IT classroom is going to be open so that they can actually be hands-on pulling wire, just like they were inside of the building, where they can access everything inside that IT classroom. This is, Kevin was talking about, this is the exterior outside of industrial maintenance, that's on that north side of the building. You can see the overhead door going in there, where they can get the big machinery in and out of there, easy access inside that industrial maintenance area. This is just overall of the north exterior. You can see all those overhead doors around the building are in, where she put in pavement a while back, got the base go to paving down, really made the side brighten up, getting that paving down, getting up out of the rocks for the weather. This is on the south exterior where we have joined the existing school. You can see the metal wall panels going up. They've been there in the last few weeks, starting on metal wall panels, so you can see those going up on the exterior of the building where we tied on to the existing high school. This is the upper level entrance. As you can see there, a lot of those windows are in, still a few panels that are waiting on that are on back orders, but those should be in the next couple of weeks, and they will get those installed.
When you go out there, if you take your time, I would like for you to look at those canopies that are both on that upper level and the lower level. Those are pre-interior metal canopies. You won't see any drainage because it's all concealed within the columns and ties into a subsurface drainage system down below. Some of the best quality work I've ever seen on some canopies was on this project. They really did a good job on those canopies.
This is just a photo inside the building. A lot of the interior doors are going in. They're going to start painting those so we can start hardware in doors. You can see a lot of those interior panels are going up inside, so a lot of that finished electric is going up right now, so they're really making good progress inside of the building. I know as you drive on the outside, you think there's not a whole lot going on, but once you get inside the building, there's a lot of work going on in the interior of the building right now. As you can see, paint's going on, window frames are getting painted inside, you're starting to see some colors. The white on the walls are getting done, you can see how bright those hallways are going to be, and then the color going on the windows. And once we get all these interior windows painted, we'll start putting in glass in the next month in these interior windows. This is the upper level restroom. You can see tiles already going on in the walls inside the restroom on that upper level. They started that this past week, so that's probably pretty far along by now. Like I said, these pictures were taken on Thursday, so those are, those are moving right along inside those restrooms. This is the upper level student collaboration area. You can see there, a lot of that painting overhead's done, the walls have got painted. You see the softening around the whole exterior of that. The windows on that upper side, the clear store windows are in that lets off the daylight in. It's really going to be a nice open space in that student collaboration area up on that upper level.
We're really excited. Those panels that you see go in and out, those are acoustical panels that we've done to kind of break up the sound and help capture that volume of sound, kind of adds the deflection in there, helps us acoustically. But there's also going to be some panels in there that are flush, and we've been working with Ms. Roy and Mr. Ford to get our graphics done. And that's going to really, really make that space pop, because right there, you see a lot of white, sort of that industrial feel and color that we wanted for this building. And when those pop in, they will have color to them, but they will all be tones of blue, and that way you've got that pop of color and make it look a little bit more modern with adding some artwork to the project.
This is inside the welding shop area. You can see a lot of the electrical connections are being completed, a lot of the piping's being run. Like the last time you saw this, you just kind of saw the walls of the welding booth, but they've done a lot of piping work inside the welding shop area since the last time you saw it there, so a lot of work being completed in there.
That's the only one that doesn't have a white ceiling as well.
Correct.
We chose that because of the exhaust from the welding booth and things like that.
Turning out the ceiling there, yeah. Everything else is white. These last two pictures, I want to show you, this is, you know, I've got a picture of the stairwell, but Mr. Ford came to us here a few weeks back, and we looked at some space underneath. This is the stairwell going up to the upper level student collaboration area, and you access the lower student collaboration area. The way you see it now, that would basically just get drywall over underneath that stairwell, and there was an opportunity there to capture some space for storage so that they could put tables, chairs, like that. So Sherman Carter put together proposal requests and some drawings, and we have priced that up. I think it's on the agenda tonight for change order to do this that you all have requested, but I just wanted to show you the space under here that we're looking at. This entire space right here, basically, we were aligned with, you see the stairwell going up, we were aligned with there and bring a wall all the way out to this corner and capture this whole space of storage and put a ceiling in there so that, put a door in it. We've got like a four-foot door, I think?
Yeah.
Four-foot door going in there, so it's clean, wide enough to roll carts and chairs and tables, whatever. And then all of that space underneath the stairwell too would be sprinkled and raided so you can store stuff under that stairwell.
And what we did originally, the intent was, was to have that enclosed, and we have to enclose it because of the ADA requirements for being head knocked. So moving this out was an opportunity to get you some extra space, especially with that collaboration area. That collaboration area has some mobile furniture, some desk things. You may want to slide things around in there and make that a gathering room. You may want to put up some sort of graduation type ceremony or some sort of event down there on that lower level, and you could pull that apart and have enough room to do something like that.
Now, we touted, board members, that we want this building used by the community and accessible to the community. We just needed a spot, really, like we said, tables, chairs, and stuff like that without having to go to some other area to drag them out. And so that whole area there, pending your own approval, we would move those, like I said, those studs and bring that wall out. But there's, even, even the way it is right now, there's more space there than what visually is represented. But when they bring the wall out there, there'll be a lot of good areas where we can have tables and chairs and et cetera, and have good community meetings and set up, you know, Chamber of Commerce or whatever. Our penny ceremony for the M&amp;A, all those different things, and have a really good space, really accessible for the material.
And I think this is the purpose, as you know, contingency is there for you all to use, not for the contractors, the architects to use, it's for you all to use. And this will come out in contingency money, it's in the budget, you'll be good to go.
That's all the pictures I have. Any questions on update of where we're at now and where we're going?
I noticed a lot of the landscape, because we're working on each city every day.
That landscape, I think it was approved at the last board meeting, this change order, because it wasn't in the original, and they started bringing in plants and rocks and stuff, and they've started on it the last few weeks, so it's already underlaid.
I think he has three of the little retaining walls built where the trees destroy it. Really looking good.
I think it stands out to me as different between the old building and how much space there is here.
Yes.
It's just really sound.
And it's going to be a state-of-the-art facility. We're already getting phone calls, some folks want to see it when it starts. We'll afford being able to show this off.
It's a block wall, like behind there. That side door, it's like a, do you like spots on it?
No.
It's just a block wall.
Yes.
You notice that out on?
That, that area right there is basically a block wall.
The door, if you wish to.
Yeah.
So that would be enclosed inside?
I'm beating my luck, I've been on the map for 20 years.
The door for this new space will be right here, so when you walk up to it, looking at it as you are down in this picture, the door will basically be right here at the corner of this wall, and you'll walk straight in there.
And see the, point that sprinkler out there, John?
Right there.
It's going to be enclosed space, and by code, we'll have to extend that screen this.
Up under the stairwell here, yes.
And then part of that has to be covered as well underneath fire control.
It's got big fire.
There are some costs involved. You can't just build a wall and be done because of all the codes.
And, you know, you may ask, well, why didn't you do it to start with? Well, we were very, very, very conscientious about your budget, thinking you'd come in on bid day, knowing we've tried to trim back everywhere we could enough to spend money. And this is one of the areas we had said, okay, let's just close it off, save some money. But I'm glad we're able to capture, you're able to hit some extra square footage for storage, because KP will never give you enough storage in any program, none of their programs. And if you're teachers, or if you know teachers, you can never give a teacher too much storage.
And the wall that will be constructed for this space will be masonry, so that it will be durable?
Yes.
Cards and tables going in, but not into it, it won't be like drywall where you're always prepared it.
Better decked wall standing there on the outside. Will that be taken out?
This wall?
That one?
Here, yes, that will come out, yes.
And that's just here.
Yeah, that, that's why they've not went any farther than we stopped, once they start framing, once we start looking at it, so that will be removed. Any other question?
It's got a good screen front here. Herb appeal is what they call it. Thank you very much.
Okay, next is the adoption of the agenda.
I don't have anything to add or remove, there's no changes. I recommend the adoption of the agenda as presented.
I make the motion to adopt the agenda.
I second it. Okay, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Joy?
Yes.
Ms. Brenda?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wickerman?
Yes.
She can turn it over to me, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bollman. Let's talk about this awesome cross-country team.
Amen.
Mr. Qualification, yes, for Brandon. Great, I think she can steal that runoff, well, I don't know.
I don't want to argue with that.
Hi, my name is Barry Bollman, I'm the head cross-country coach at Russell County High School, and Mr. Ford's asked me to say a few things about our season. Well, first of all, it was a tough season because of COVID. Took us a while to get started, and after we got started, a lot of schools wouldn't accept us to run. They were very reluctant to let teams in, they wanted to keep it down to a small amount of teams, usually they did it in a level area, so we had to do a little more traveling than normal. We went to Warren East, of course, we got to run against some good schools, and even went to Middlesbrough once, which was a heck of a drive, but we, we did well down there also. So we ended up getting six meets in, and we did well in all of them, and we ended up finishing fifth in the region, which gave us an automatic placement in the state. And we went up to, they ran in Paris, Kentucky, and we, we did real well up there also as a team, and we, Justin Sterns, which was one of our seniors, he was the first high school, Russell County High School cross-country member to ever make all the state, so. You know, as a, as a coach, you're usually a teacher and a motivator, but as this group of kids, you know, it makes our, my assistant coach, Stephen Kinder, myself, it made our job very easy, because they're very self-motivated. Actually, we had to get on sometimes and run it too much on our own, because it was wearing itself out, so we were extremely proud of the coaches, and, and thanks for, thank the board for recognizing us tonight. Give me a call.
Yeah.
I want to start with our seniors. We have two seniors, Justin Sterns.
We normally shake hands, shake hands, but you know, COVID stops the regulations and the standards.
Our second senior isn't here today, Tyler, he's out of Campbell's family. He, he's not here. And so we'll have to, we don't have any juniors, so we're going to jump right with sophomores. Mason Eris.
Congratulations. Okay, all right, thank you.
Clayson Tross.
Good job, man.
Eighth grader, Nathan Lee, our brother. And seventh grader, Horace and Tross.
I can't even hear a shirt. Mr. Bollman, we have there with him, they get a picture.
Okay, I will have you with me.
Harvey?
I can hear you.
This is not about you, Ms. Wickerman. See, I'll have your awesome picture, there you go. Coach Bollman, I'll play a pile of his unless you want to get it that good?
That'd be fine.
Okay, thank you all.
It's not an easy sport, even for boys. Okay, next we've got boys golf.
Charlie Anderson?
Oh, God. We have all these kids that went to state this year, and I haven't been to COVID.
All right, my name is Charlie Anderson, I'm a Laker employees golf team coach, and we just had a fabulous season. First off, I want to thank Mr. Ford, I want to thank the Board of Education, you know, through, through this year, the restrictions, the guidelines that's been in place, and just the opportunity to go and play and let our boys compete was awesome, and really appreciate the board and Mr. Ford and with all their support. Our golf team, we have a fabulous support group. I want to mention our community support, like with Country Club and many other people within our community support our golf program, so I'm just so thankful for that. But this season, we have a fabulous group, a great team, and I was honored to coach them. And this year, we had two guys that qualified for the state, a first-time qualifier, Nick Blakey, and Clay Anderson, he is a three-time qualifier for the state. Our team this year, we finished first in Plasky County Invitational. Normally, there's probably 12 to 16 teams every Invitational we go to. And one thing that Kentucky, many people don't know this, but many golf in the state of Kentucky is one of the top in the nation, so when we go to invitationals, there's very, very strong fields, and just to be able to, to win at an Invitational is pretty awesome. We won in Plasky County Invitational, we got third place at Warren East Invitational this year. We got third place in the region, and just as a team missed qualifying, going as a team to the state just by a few strokes. But we were fortunate for two of our guys to qualify for the state and go to Bowling Green and compete in the state, and so I'm just super proud of these boys and of our team, and I'm just very thankful for all the support we have. Give me that call him up. You want me to call them up?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
All right, let's do Nick Blakey. Come on up. Nick Blakey is a senior for the Laker golf team. This is first year qualifying for the state. And he went out there and competed both days in a two-day event. And he played awesome. Very proud of him and his future, what he's gonna be doing. Our next one is Clay Anderson. He is a senior. He's qualified for the state three years in a row. He's been a four-year all-region member of the fourth-region golf team. And he's gonna be going to Lindsey Wilson to play golf and further his education.
Girls' golf, Mackenzie Trautman.
I don't think Miss Coach Routh's here. Is Mackenzie here? Look her up, bud. Coach Melinda Routh is the coach of our girls' golf team. And Mackenzie Trautman, also a student from high school and also went to state. So we have two young men and a young lady that all of us in state this year with their golf team. Congratulations to Mackenzie. I'll give her some certificates too. Yes, Dr. Ardrog.
Okay, Russell County Education Association, certified and classified employee recognition.
First, I don't think I say this enough, but I just want to thank you all for always allowing us to take time to recognize employees of the month. We do really appreciate it. But I'm here to recognize two employees and then work on up, as long as COVID stays good. Both of these, when announced, you'll talk about you all. If you all will come up, we have a monetary check for you as a reward and a gift. We have such amazing educators in Russell County. I wish we had more months so that we could get through all of them, because every one of them deserves it. I'm going digital today. I have it on my phone. The first one is Shannon Taylor. I don't think she's with us today. But she teaches at Salem and has been there for three years. Before that, she was in Adair County. She got her associate's degree in early childhood and her bachelor's in P5 education, and then went on to get a master's degree in special education. And she teaches first grade at Salem. When asked her what she liked best about teaching, she said it was so hard to pick. But one of the things is just being able to have the kids share special experiences with them, whether it's the Legos they built the night before, or something their sibling did. She said that best part was just those special moments they get to share in their lives. She spends time with her family, going to church, and reading devotionals. And her quote was, "I can do all things through Christ who strengthens me." So that was for Shannon. I'll get hers. And then December's, RCA teacher of the month, is Miss Susan Walters. Hope you'll start coming up here. I know Miss Walters personally, but I have to say she's one of the most humble, modest people that I know. When I let her know that she, she's gonna get mad at me for this, but when I let her know that she received this award, the first thing that she did is she sent me back an email and said, "You know what? I was just there last month receiving an award. Is there someone else that you can take time to acknowledge? We have so many wonderful teachers." And I said, "Yes, we do. But we want to recognize you." So that's just to speak to her character. I just had to share that with you all. Miss Walters has been teaching for 20 years. She's at Russell Springs Elementary and teaches writing and language arts. I've been thrilled to have her teach my show. She also taught at Union Chapel, Jamestown Elementary.
Tamargo?
That's better.
Okay, Tamargo Elementary and Montgomery County Intermediate School. She has her bachelor's from Kentucky Christian University and her master's from Western Kentucky. What she loves best about teaching is getting to know and connecting with my students, giving them confidence and watching them grow as writers. And just to show how much they love her, my daughter's named her so she could see Miss Walters. So they really love her. They really do. Reading, writing, music, time with her family, being outside in church activities, and apparently laundry are her activities and hobbies. And her quote is also one of my favorites. It's on my email. But no act of kindness, no matter how small, is ever wasted. So we'd like to give you this and give you a chance to some something. Shouldn't have told that story on the road, but every teacher is a hero, especially these days. We all want our students to succeed. And I'm just thankful to be honored and would just wish I could share this with every teacher, not just in Russell County, but everywhere. So I love my job and it does feel good to be honored. So thank you, Brooke, for doing that. Thank you all.
Good job. And she never stops smiling. Say yeah. I got them dusting them. Yeah, I'll let Kevin if you don't care. About the middle, you just want to say something about the middle school? Tell us what you're gonna say. Okay? Okay. Yeah, you go ahead, Kevin. He needs to get on the road, but he wants to mention something about the middle school.
Just want to give you an update of where we're at on the middle school project. That's one that's on its way and rolling right now. We met, Jonathan was there, as well as Larry, and all the engineers, all the whole of the design team was onsite. Looked at a lot of different things, talked about different things. And we've come up with some really good ideas. Your principal at the middle school, he's not here, but I will give him a huge pat on the back because he took a different perspective. And we've come up with some options we're excited to show you here in January soon to get your approval, to get this thing going. We've also got the geotech, or actually the site survey is underway. Doug Gooch with AGE is the firm that will be doing the survey work and doing the site work. He's very familiar with the site. He's done most of the work all around the site. So it's good to have somebody as familiar as that. He's probably second as familiar as what Larry is. Larry's the asset that really seems to know where all the hidden gotchas are on these buildings. So we look forward to working with Larry again. But we're excited. We will be coming back to you hopefully in January or the first of February, the schematic design, to get this thing rolling. I know Brad's kind of anxiously awaiting. They want to bid it as soon as possible. So we want to get this out on the streets as soon as we can, take advantage of the market as it is. But I wanted to give you all that update time. All right?
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Anxious to see that.
That was a very, very productive meeting. And what I've told other people, Kevin and Jonathan and other folks, engineers, they sit in there, but they talk, more importantly, that they listen. And just like he references the idea that Mr. Ackerman had. He was literally rolling up papers and getting ready to conclude the meeting. And Mr. Ackerman said, "Hold on just a minute. What about this?" And it kind of changed the direction. So we just appreciate you all listening to ideas and being open instead of...
Okay, we'll go to the consent agenda items.
Okay, we have the previous meeting minutes, payment of bills, construction funds report, school activity funds report, financial report, and the treasurer's monthly report for November. Thank you, David. Merry Christmas.
I may have forgotten how to read one of these, so let's hope I don't stumble over this one tonight. All right, the treasurer's report for the month of November 2020. Beginning balance on hand at the beginning of the month, $3,594,444.92. Total receipts for the month, $5,552,576.82. Total of the receipts and beginning balance, $9,147,021.74. Disbursements for the month were $2,815,287. The balance at the close of the month was $6,332,188.7. For the fund balances, the general fund, Fund One, $6,361,384.42. Special projects fund two, -432,872.91. District activity fund twenty-one, $3,784.90. Capital outlay fund three-ten, $135,392 even. FSPK Milton Fund, Fund Three-20, $708,343.88. Construction fund three-sixty, -426,240.25. Debt service fund four-hundred, zero dollars. Food service fund fifty-one, -21,487. And fiduciary fund, Fund Seven Thousand, $3,627.70. Brings the total cash rebank for all the funds to $6,332,188.87. If you'll notice the negatives there, just a couple remarks on Fund Two with the special projects. We'll be getting large reimbursement. I don't know that we'll get it in December just because, you know, it's Christmas holiday for everybody at KD two. But we've kind of been setting on some of our expenses and not requesting reimbursement from things from our CARES Act money to deal with COVID. Because we were told, you know, early on, we might be able to get FEMA reimbursement for some of those things, which did not pan out. So now we can go ahead and submit them through our CARES money and get those back to us. So one of the big expenses there, of course, and we just paid that recently in the last couple of weeks, were the Chromebooks. So that's a rather large chunk of our CARES money. So we'll have that coming in shortly. It's not by the end of this month, certainly by the end of January. And then construction fund, of course, with our new building that we talked about earlier, you know, we were given the 5.7 million, I believe, if I'm remembering correctly. Yeah, from the workforce grant. And we've started looking at how to get ourselves reimbursed for that, and we just haven't managed to get it going yet.
We had to expand all of our bond.
We do, yeah. We basically had to run out of it before we could ask for that anyway. So, you know, it's not that we've done anything out of order. But they have a rather complicated reimbursement process. So I would not be surprised if that doesn't run negative on us for a little while till we kind of get in the swing of getting the paperwork in line with what they want. And then I think we'll be getting all that back.
No, they referenced our contingency. We have spent very, of course, you were required to put, I think off the top of my head, it's 600 something thousand, our contingency is, off our building project. And we've spent very little of that. We've been very, it's been a great project. And so, you know, like for this change order here later on, we've got those contingency funds. And KD does make you budget those in case something comes up during the course of the project. You know, we've done different things. We've added a little bit, but then we've done things to deduct some costs as well. So that project is running good within the confines of the money that we have budgeted to begin with. I feel good on that change order and stuff moving forward.
Food service, I mean, of course, with us not being in school, we aren't serving the number of meals. And, you know, right now, I don't think it's anything to get too alarmed about. I mean, I know that's a negative and that's not good. But if we get back in school in person, we get our numbers back up, I think we can still end the year, you know, in positive shape. And if not, we do have some CARES Act money that, you know, if we have to subsidize them a little bit for this year to kind of make up for that, we can do so. But we don't want to start doing that until we are at the end of the year and we know for sure they can't stand alone and make it on their own. So, you know, it's not bad. They did get a really large reimbursement, which would have been for the month of November, but the money comes in a month behind. So they did get a very nice reimbursement. It came in maybe last week. So I think they may be starting to pull the other direction. I think doing some of the extra weekend meals and the summer meals and some of the extra snacks and things is gonna help them. So that and the combo, if we can come back in person and get more meals that way. I think, I think we're still in, I'm not alarmed about it. I'm cautiously optimistic.
And it was a good day today. I think it was 1,904, something like that.
Yeah. So, and I mean, that's really gonna help because every student that had meals picked up for them are gonna get a count, what, seven breakfasts?
Seven days, yeah.
Seven meals, you know, seven lunches, seven snacks, seven, all that. So we get a reimbursement for each one of those meals, and that's really gonna be a good shot in the arm for our food service program.
I don't know if Maryland County does that, but it is absolutely amazing.
Yeah, it was.
See them cooks, see them work like they were working today? Yeah, they work way too hard for...
And we appreciate what the bank did, the First National Bank, $2,000 worth of gift cards, IGA, Little Caesars, McDonald's, Federal Resources, they had two bikes. I'm probably leaving somebody out. Bad thing to do when you start mentioning stuff, you leave somebody out. But Harry and the Carpenters, and I'm sure some of that is incentivized by us folks to come out today so they could get their name in those drawings. So that was just a good way to start Christmas break.
Yeah.
I make the motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Is that Ms. Joey second?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Joey?
Yes.
Ms. Brenda?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes.
Fiscal year 2020, I'll admit.
I'm Joe Montgomery, here to present your fiscal year June 30th, 2020 audit report, financial statements. I am the partner in charge of auditing and our firm. I'm not gonna read the entire, everything to you, even though I do consider this the most exciting part of the board meeting. But I'm gonna give you the highlights, give you all some information, some, you know, low down a little bit on what happened during the year, where your finances ended up. And feel free to ask any questions you have. I'm here as long as you need me to be. And I'm actually a legal, I'm a geek with no life, and I love these things. So pages one through three, that is our independent audit report on your financial statements. It's what we call an unmodified opinion, meaning that it is a clean opinion on your financial statements. Pages four through 10, that is management's discussion and analysis. It's prepared by your finance officer. It's required supplemental information. It gives a good summary. So if you don't want to read all 89 pages, you can read these. Get a good idea of what occurred during the year, where you stand at the end of the year. Page number 11, that's the statement in that position. This is the balance sheet for the entire district. At June 30th, 2020, you had total current assets of $6,845,000. That's down 6.1 million dollars. And the reason that is down is because you all spent money on your construction this year, okay? From bonds, previously issued bonds. Total non-current assets, $53,977,000. That's up 5.9 million. Again, that's because of construction. Total assets and deferred outflows, $65,228,000, down 147,000. Your total current liabilities, $3,327,000. That's up about $28,000, so not much change there from the previous year. Your total non-current liabilities were $55,692,000, down 1.8 million. There's two items here I'd like to point out. One is the net pension liability, and the other is the net other post-employment benefits liability. You, like all other districts in the state, and most governmental's in the state, participate in what's called multi-employer retirement and benefit plans through the state. Those are underfunded at this point. The rules for governmental accounting say that we must, or you must, show your proportion shared liability on your balance sheet, okay? Your net pension liability is $11,519,000, and your net other post-employment benefits liability is $8,670,000. Those numbers are provided to us by actuaries hired by the state each year in order to evaluate the pension and OPM plans. This isn't anything you're writing checks for, okay? It just has to be shown so that those that... It just has to be shown, so that those that use your financial statements know that this potential liability is hanging out there, but you're not writing checks, and there's no decision that, or anything that you as a board or the district can do to change these numbers. So, just kind of let you know that, because sometimes people see these big numbers, they're like, well, how are we paying that one down? You're not, so. Overall, your total liabilities were fifty-nine million dollars, down fifty-three thousand from the previous year. And your total liabilities and deferred inflows, sixty-one million, five seventy-six thousand, down one million, one hundred and ninety-four thousand. And your total net position was three million, nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. That's an increase of one million, forty-six thousand dollars from the previous year, so that's going in the right direction. The next page is your statement of activities. This is your revenues and expenditures for the entire district. For the year ending June 30th, 2020, you had total revenues of thirty-six million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Basically, it's the same as the previous year, so you didn't gain any ground on revenue, nor did you lose ground. Total expenses were thirty-five million, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. That's down one million, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand from the previous year. And overall, you had a change in net position of one million, forty, one million, forty-six thousand, nine thirty-nine to the positive. So, again, we've got some pretty good numbers here. Revenues were flat, but you all were able to offset that by decreases in expenses, which has allowed you all to increase your net position. Page number thirteen, that is your balance sheet for your governmental funds. I'm going to focus on the general fund, because that's the fund that you all actually have control over. The rest of them are controlled by grants or legislation. The general fund, beginning June 30th, 2020, had total assets of three million, seven hundred and one thousand dollars. That is a one million, one hundred and forty-four thousand dollar improvement over last year. Total liabilities, one hundred fifty-seven thousand, four fifty-nine. Not much change from the previous year. And your total fund balance was three million, five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. That is a one million, ninety thousand dollar improvement over last year. So, again, we're, I'm seeing a lot of improvements from the previous year, which is, which is good for your district. Page number fourteen, this shows the differences between the two balance sheets. Again, majority of your difference is your fixed assets and net depreciation of fifty-three million, four fifty-one. You had bonds payable of thirty-six million, eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And then we have what I call the two evil twins there. Net pension liability and net other post-employment benefits liability, so nine million, eighty thousand dollars, and eight million, eighty-six thousand dollars respectively. Page number fifteen. This is your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for your governmental funds. Again, I'm going to focus on the general fund. Total revenues for the general fund was twenty-six million, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. That's a hundred fifty-three thousand dollar improvement. Total expenditures were twenty-five million, eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. That is a four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar decrease in expenses for the general fund as compared to the previous year. And overall, you had a net change in fund balance of one million, ninety thousand, and five hundred and eighty-five dollars to the positive, which is a very good, very good number, especially under the circumstances you all had, everybody had this year, with the COVID and things like that going on, it's been a bit of a, bit of a struggle for some places. So, good numbers there. Page sixteen shows the differences between the two revenue and expense reports. Again, your capital outlays and depreciation expense, five million, nine hundred and fifty-four thousand is your biggest. You did pay down on your bond principal by two million dollars. And then, your cost of benefits for net employee contribution for your pension plan, that's again, that is a number provided by the state actuaries, but it's one million, six hundred and five thousand dollars. But again, it's not something that you all paid, but it has to be put into your financial statements. Page number seventeen, that is your statement of position for your food service. At the end of the year, total current assets were two hundred forty-six thousand, six ninety-five. That's forty-four thousand dollar improvement over the previous year. Total assets were seven hundred and seventy-two thousand. That was a seven hundred, or two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar improvement. Total assets and deferred outflows, one million, five hundred and thirty-three thousand. Increase of forty-one thousand dollars from the previous year. Your total liabilities were three million, twenty-three thousand dollars, about two hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase over last year. But again, that increase has to do with your pension liabilities that get split out to your food service and split into your regular governmental activities. So, that was three hundred and one thousand dollars of the increase. So, overall, you have a net position of one million, eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, which is a decrease from the previous year of two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. However, we pull out these numbers from the state, and I kind of call them inflated numbers, and get down to what your district did, you'd be sitting on about a one point three million dollar positive in that. So if we pull the inflated numbers, and I call them inflated, but they're numbers that you're not paying, so let's get back to what your district actually did in food service. You would have about a one point two, one point three million dollar positive net position. Page number eighteen, that is your statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position for your food service. Total operating revenues were one hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars this past year, that's down twenty-nine thousand, which is expected when you shut down your cafeterias in mid-March. Kids can't buy on a card and things like that, so the revenue's down. It's across the board everywhere I'm at. Total operating expenses, two million, six hundred and twelve thousand dollars. That's down eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand from the previous year. Part of that is due to the pension. Total non-operating revenues, two million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, down one hundred and eighty-one thousand. And overall, there was a loss of two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. However, your change in net position was two hundred and sixty-one thousand to the negative. But if we add back, again, what came from the state, just look at your district, it would be about a six hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollar positive number there. Page number nineteen, that's statement of cash flows. It shows where your money came in, where your money went out on your food service. Not going over that much, other than, you know, you had a bit of a rough year, everybody did, but even at that, you had a six, eighteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollar positive cash inflow to food services, even under the circumstances ran. At this point, you probably think I lied about not going over every page. So, to prove that I did, we're going to flip back to page number thirty-two and thirty-three. I always like to make people laugh. Page number thirty-two, that shows your bond debt by year. The first column is the principal. The second column is the interest that's going to be paid on that by year. Participation, that's where the state, the SFCC, is paying part of the bonds for you guys, where they are participating in the construction. And then the final column is the amount that the district's cash outflow will be to service these bonds through the end of the life of the bonds, which is in fiscal year 2039. So, if I'm still here, I'll let you know you're debt-free. Page number thirty-three, that shows all of your long-term liabilities. At the beginning of the year, you had fifty-nine million, six hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars in long-term liabilities. That increased by one million, five hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. That is mostly due to the net pension liability going up. You had reductions of three million, four hundred thousand dollars. The majority of that was one million, nine hundred and eighty thousand that you all paid down on your bonds. Then you had ending balance total overall, long-term liabilities of fifty-seven million, eight hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. And of that, in the current fiscal year that you're in now, two million, one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars will be paid. The next page, since I talked about the evil twins and the net pension liability and the OPEBs, if you go to page thirty-eight, that'll give you a little bit of an idea. When this rule came out, and for those that may not know, it's, we call it, it's called GASB, Government County Standards Boards, okay? They put out the rules for how your financials wants to be reported. The pension liability is what we call GASB statement number sixty-eight. It came out several years back, about five years ago. And the reason it did was because there were some municipalities in California that had their own little multi-employer plans, they got together and did. Those plans went bankrupt. When those plans went bankrupt, these little municipalities were handed huge bills that they didn't even know existed. And when they got those bills, these municipalities went bankrupt. And when they went bankrupt, the people that had bought their bonds are holding a piece of paper they weren't working with anymore. So, the GASB, the Government County Standards Board said, well, they need to know what potential there is out there. Now, you all are in a statewide plan. Is it going to go bankrupt? Not. The government can't let it happen, because if it does, don't even worry about turning the lights out when you leave, because the electric, electric company will have already turned it off of you. So, you know, they're not going to go bankrupt, but we do have to show these numbers, and it's not even your pay. At the top is the district's proportion share of the CERS and the pension liability. CERS is your county employee retirement system. That is on your classified employees, not your teachers. For this district alone, your proportion share of the overall liability is eleven million, five hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. The next line down is proportion share of TRS. TRS is your teacher retirement system. When GASB sixty-eight came out, the state of Kentucky said that, and rightfully, that the CERS is not, has nothing to do with it, it's the county employer. The teacher retirement system of the state of Texas said that's a hundred percent their liability. We do have to show the number, but it's not something that even if it went bankrupt, you all wouldn't be on the hook for this. But, for this district alone, just so we can understand the numbers we're talking about, fifty-one million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollar underfunded for this district. You can look at Jefferson Counties and put two zero, or zero, or two zeros behind that. So, just to give you an idea of the numbers we're looking at. Page number forty-three, this is the OPEB liability for teacher retirement system. When the, this one came out, the state said, well, they're not a hundred percent liable for this one, they're going to split it with the, with the school districts fairly, as they said, and their idea of fair is sixty, forty, y'all get sixty and they get forty. So, the district's proportion share of OPEB liability for the teacher retirement system was five million, nine hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And the state's proportion share of that is four million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Overall, ten million, six hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars underfunded OPEB liability for this district. If you'll turn to page number fifty-three. At the bottom, it says no, oh, it's on behalf payments, and we'd like to kind of point this out. You all are familiar with the SEAT money, the money that the state sends to you to pay various bills and run various programs. The state also pays expenses for this district directly. Always like to kind of point it out, because you know about the SEAT. But the state for this district paid a total of eight million, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars in bills directly to providers. They paid into the retirement system, three million, eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. And they paid health insurance in the amount of three million, six hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars for this district. So, just kind of like to point that out. The next page I would like for you to turn to is a two-pager. It is page number seventy-six. We auditing geeks call this the SEAT fund, it's a schedule of expenditure of federal rewards. This shows the amount of federal funds this district expended during fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. For this district, total federal rewards expended was five million, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars. Food service, which is, it says, you know, it's under the US Department of Agriculture, that is your child nutrition, you know, breakfast, lunch, et cetera, two million, one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Your other main one would be titled one, one million, one hundred and fifty-three thousand, and then HDEA, one million, thirty-three thousand dollars. HDEA stands for Individuals with a Disability Education Act. So, that gives you an idea of the funding that the federal government is doing to have you as a district, to have the programs that they're requiring you to have. Page number seventy-eight, this is our schedule of findings and question costs. This sheet basically would be a summary. It's a summary of how the audit went relative to your internal controls and compliance. This has mostly no's on it, that's what you want to see. Had there been issues, for example, if there'd been significant deficiencies in your internal controls or material weaknesses, or had the district been audient, been federal on boards on things it shouldn't have spent on. We would be letting the state and the federal government know on this sheet that that is the case, but we're not. What we're telling them here is there were no issues, and relax. We're lacking a better way to put this, if you get them to relax. Page number eighty and eighty-one. That is our independent auditor report on internal control of financial reporting and compliance. Again, it's an unmodified opinion, we did not find any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses during our testing. So, this report, again, is letting them know that. Page number eighty-two and eighty-three. That is our independent auditor report on compliance over your major programs. These are your federal programs we just looked at. And again, is an unmodified opinion. We didn't find any weaknesses in your controls over your compliance, over your federal on boards, and we did not have any issues where funds had been misspent that needed to be reported to the powers that be, so they can address it with you. So, again, we have an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. Page number thirty-one, I'm sorry, thirty-one, eighty-four. Oh, no, Michael's kidding. I skipped a few pages, so get back and hit them again. Through eighty-six, that's our management letter. During the course of an audit, there's always some minor things where there can be some improvements. We put those in here as a management letter. And the reason we do is they're not a systematic problem, it's usually human error. But if we don't address them and bring them to the superintendent of finance officer's attention, and your attention, then it can become a systematic problem, and then we have one that will be a significant deficiency in controls or material weakness. So, these are minor things, they've been addressed with superintendent, with the finance officer, and they're well aware of them, and are taking corrective action. Eighty-seven through eighty-nine. The auditing standards require that we, as auditors, communicate with you, the, those charging governance, the summary and writing on how the audit went. Had we had to make what is called material adjustments for your financial statements to be correct? Had we had problems getting the audit done? Have we had disagreements with management over accounting or auditing issues? If there'd been anything of any major problems, we're required to let you know. This letter is letting you know that we did not have any of those. The audit went smoothly, we did not have to make any significant adjustments for your financial statements to be correct. And this is basically an unmodified opinion, or a clean opinion on your staff here, that they work well with us and glad that everything will be in on a timely basis. timely basis.
I like the words, no such disagreements.
No such disagreements, we didn't have any disagreements. I had the board chair one time ask me, said, what didn't you put in? Uh, I can promise you, it's supposed to be an area of being here, and I do have the battle scars to bear. Questions, comments, claims, rights, I listen to anything.
How long does it take you to do that?
I'm sorry?
How long does it take you to do this?
How long does it take us to do the audit or, or good reporting? The, the, the whole thing together is, is, is well over three hundred hours.
Yeah, I don't know.
They start before the fiscal year ends, you can ask Ms. Carnes that. You talk about battle scars, she might have some of them from you, Joe.
She probably has several of those from me.
But you know, you know, you reference the staff, and, and I just wanna note my public appreciation to Ms. Carnes and her, her principals and her, her, uh, school bookkeepers, because and her department heads and their, uh, central office administrators, because it does take everyone, uh, you know, Marla, oftentimes, Ms. Carnes oftentimes jokes about she has to be the bad person, says no, or, you know, do this and do that, but that's just part of it. But it does take everybody being cognizant, and we appreciate you, Mr. Montgomery, you're always accessible throughout the school year, and, uh, it, it's just a, you know, it's a cohesive effort of everybody coming together to do that. You don't get a report like this, uh, without people being on, you know, top of their toes.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's, uh, you know, if, if people are doing a good job and they're working together, uh, in the district typically you'll find that there's not many problems. Uh, where we will find problems is, you know, you walk in and, you know, you've got people that aren't really working together, they're not communicating, uh, et cetera, et cetera, and then, you know, it's kind of like the old saying, you know, you dig up one dead body, you find the graveyard. Uh, so you start finding that you've got systematic problems, or something that you all don't have. Uh, but I've got two reports this year that went out that had, you know, systematic problems, and, and they're, they're public, they're public, not, uh, public information, they posted on KE's website, but one of them had somebody that was working on the construction and went ahead and ordered, uh, a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars of items for a construction project that hadn't even been approved by the state. Didn't get anybody's approval, just went in and did it. So, just decided they wanted to do it, yes. So, you know, you run, you run into those things, and, and again, it was, you know, it was, it was lack of communication, lack of diligence on their part, so, uh, so you run into those things, and you're trying to handle anything like that, so.
Marla did a great job. Good job.
What she does know is she can retire, all the bonds issued have been paid off. So, she's got at least until two thousand and thirty-nine.
I don't know.
But having said all that about Ms. Carnes, Mr. Montgomery, she does, we think, the law can say no.
She does like to say no?
Yeah, absolutely.
Some, some of your best.
Right up Anthony Carroll, are we all agreeing with that?
We're on site.
My, my, my. My experience with successful, uh, school districts, uh, uh, from a financial standpoint is that, uh, the, uh, finance officer uses the word no more than she uses any other word.
And she has these plaques on her desk. That just discourages people coming in there.
Absolutely.
Uh, we're, we're, we're serious.
I thought she said no, or yes. I'm sorry, you need to go to the back for one. Mine's going off again.
Do you all have any questions or any other comments from Mr. Montgomery, or no? We do appreciate you, and I'll say it again, we appreciate, uh, your accessibility, uh, throughout the school year, because I think that's important for us, and we do want to do things right.
Yep.
And, uh, we'll call them throughout the year and say, how, you know, how should we do this, or what's the best way to do this, and in the end, that may prevent problems, you know, for you as well, if you do it right.
I always tell people I'm all about making my life easy.
Yeah.
Uh, so if I can give guidance as to go along in order for it to be done correctly, it's easier on me than it is to come to a district and have to figure out what happened and then get it corrected, so, you know. Uh, I like for my districts, if it's something unusual or they're not sure, shoot me an email, I can establish within twenty-four hours. So, um, again, it's all, I, I, I'm just gonna be honest, it's all about me, it makes my life easier. But, yeah.
And the stimulus money, the CARES money, the VESTR money, and all these other things, last mile of their day, all that puts more, uh, work on Ms. Carnes, you know, to keep all that separate. Well, that's one reason the state delayed audit for T-Way because of federal, uh, the stimulus.
Yeah, and they're, and they're still, they're still delayed, but we, uh, the federal, we were holding it up because the federal government hadn't put out guidance on the CARES Act, uh, the COVID money, uh, since July, and the years of the SSR. You all didn't spend a lot of it, uh, but, um, we were basically on hold for the federal government to tell us what we needed to do, if we had to do anything with it. But those of you that had been around for about, uh, remember what we called the Obama money, it was the ARRA money back in two thousand and eighteen and behind. When that came out, they told us, auditors, that if you spend one dollar, we gotta look at it. So, we had to look at every single dollar that was spent of that money every year. So, we were on hold, waiting for the federal government to tell us if that's the same thing. They finally came out, I mean, it's been delayed, uh, federal government says they might have it out by mid-January, the guidance. But they did come out and say, if you've already, if you've released your audit reports, this guy, you won't have to, this guidance will not apply. So, as soon as I got that, an hour and a half later, every one of mine were released. So, so, it's like, okay, guys, you give us that guidance, if it's already released before the, before the new guidance comes out, the new guidance doesn't, doesn't apply, I went ahead and released immediately, so, um, so, well, what happens next year, who knows?
Yeah, who knows? Well, I do recommend approval of fiscal year twenty twenty, Mr. Goddard, that was submitted to the Kentucky Department of Education.
I made that motion. It was excellent.
Okay. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery.
Thank you.
Careful driving home.
You all have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Keith.
Okay, we got FY twenty-two draft budget.
According to the requirements set forth by the Kentucky Department of Education, both the boards of education are mandated to review the draft budget by January thirty-first of each year. This is nothing that requires board approval. Of course, Ms. Carnes, if you want to speak to, uh, we're waiting for the one-year budget anyway from the state, and this budget that's presented here is, uh, basically a place owner, carryover from the current budget.
We're just all over the current year, we're going to, that's two of what we need for this draft, and this is a review process, we don't submit that on to the state like we do with T-D, but in the work of it. At this point, we really don't know anything about next year, we don't know what our money's gonna look like. The only one piece of news that we're actually kind of, it said that the CERS retirement rate will go up that twelve percent from, I think it's twenty-four point oh-six to the target of twenty-six point nine-five percent. So, we know that our retirement compensation for our classified SAC are going up twelve percent, but other parts don't know either.
And, uh, again, I'm gonna mistake, like, so they passed the one-year budget last year due to the COVID, COVID, and, uh, they'll clean that up this year with the gathering session, and so, it'll be near the end of that session, of course, before we have a final budget. But we'll be more detailed for the next one coming out in May for, for the board, but there's no action that's required on this.
Board resolutions, section four fifty-seven, B, Eligible Deferred Compensation Plan.
This is at no cost to the board, it just gives our employees another option to, with our cafeteria plan, which is American fidelity, and cafeteria means, you know, if you go to cafeteria, you can offer a lot of different things, and our cafeteria plan, American fidelity, is who offers all of our additional benefits that our, our employees can take advantage of. Uh, this one that we want to be able to offer our employees is a four fifty-seven B. Uh, the main significant difference of that is that withdrawals from the retirement plan are contingent upon the date of retirement and not the age that the employee retires. So, on some, like a four oh-three B, if someone has that plan, then it's typically fifty-nine and a half years of age, even though the person may be retired fifty-five years of age, they still can't touch that, that money until fifty-nine and a half. Well, what's significant about four fifty-seven B, if someone's putting their money in that and they retire, and maybe they're fifty or fifty-two, that's when they're eligible to start pulling money from a four fifty-seven B plan. So, it's nothing that, the board's not responsible for putting money into, there's no magic contribution or anything like that, but it requires the board to pass the, uh, the attached resolution, the four, section four fifty-seven, Deferred Compensation Plan Board Resolution, that gives Ms. Carnes the authorization to implement this plan with American fidelity. Anything to add to that, Ms. Carnes?
No, I mean, that's approved, it's at no cost, it means another benefit our employees can make in any of that.
A, a good benefit, you know, you know, and then we're starting to do that, be, at the first of the year when we have those meetings with, uh, American fidelity to do that. So, I recommend that the attached board resolution authorizing a four fifty-seven B Eligible Deferred Compensation Plan with American fidelity be approved as presented.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
I'll second. Okay, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Architect and Construction Management Contracts, Russell County Middle School.
I'm gonna jump a little one.
I have a few jumps a little bit.
Lake Cumberland Regional College and Workforce Center Proposal Request Number Nineteen.
This is, this is the space that Mr. Keith and, uh, Mr. Smith noted with their own stage, talking about the pictures underneath that stairwell, uh, to take that, it's not, it's not only that area, it brings that area out, that Mr. Smith noted with the, with the laser pointer, um, it's an additional cost of twelve thousand seventy-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. You have a complete breakdown of all the associated costs attached to that, so, uh, branch construction, four thousand fifty-seven dollars and twenty cents, and you'll see even down to the hardware set of what all the costs are for that. Landmarks, green floor, seven hundred and fifty dollars for the, for the head, uh, car Michael Mason through to do the block, four thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty cents, um, bikini painting, the, the zero on that, and then pay electric for the, uh, for the labor to get, to install the electrical out there and, and some material, it's two thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents, and CMP two percent, so it, it totals to be twelve thousand seventy-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. It's a, it's a, uh, it's a project that, that I would love to see done for that, for that building, which we're always in complete agreement, we've both been over there several times, just because it's gonna be so important, I think, for going forward. That building is gonna be there a long time, and I think it's just smart, uh, to have an area that it can be making a lot more user-friendly for, uh, for community committees or whatever. Uh, as, as Kevin said, the Kentucky Department of Education, you never get to just throw in storage areas, extra spaces, and this certainly captures an area that would be very beneficial, I think, for the future of that, of that building. Mr. Smith, do you have anything else to add to that?
And we've reviewed those numbers along with Kevin and him and SCV, so, the pricing that you all received are in line, so, the pricing, the good pricing for this edition.
I recommend that the attached proposal request for the Lake Cumberland Regional College Workforce Center in the amount of twelve thousand seventy-nine dollars and eighty cents be presented, be approved as presented. And again, we've got a, a good contingency fund, it's not adding to the overall budget of the, of the project at all. It's because of the contingency. We, we sign off on it again, that they send it to the state.
Can we make a motion?
I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve the change order to close in, in the amount of twelve, twelve thousand seventy-nine eighty-seven.
I'll second. Okay, Mr. Murray?
Well, I wanted to vote for that, because I know we need it, it sounds a little bit high. Uh, I'm gonna vote yes on it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Architect and Construction Management Contracts.
Okay, this formalizes what you all, uh, approved at the previous board meeting on September twenty-first, when we, um, solicited the letters of interest for, regarding middle school for construction management and, and architectural services. This is the approval of such contracts to provide for that. You'll notice, you'll see that Kentucky Department of Education, because they're standard contracts, they don't get to sit down and arbitrarily throw in numbers and think, well, we're gonna charge this much or that much, because as it's outlined there with the insurance requirements and everything else in the contract, it's all governed, uh, uh, with the state, even down to, again, to the amount that they charge. So, attached are the owner architect and owner construction manager, uh, with performance bond and payment bond documents, contracts for Russell County Board of Education, again, with Sherman Carter Barnhart, our architect, and branch construction, construction manager, manager for Lake Cumberland Regional College. Whoop, that is a typo. Sorry, I should have that from middle school. Sorry about that. Uh, with board approval, the contracts will then be sent to the Kentucky Department of Education for review and approval. Uh, as noted before, on construction, nothing is said and done, but just one thing, there's so many layers of, of oversight with that, even with these contracts that are filled out, uh, and then you all, with your all, with your all's approval, we'll send them to the Kentucky Department of Education for their approval. So, I recommend approval of the contracts, uh, with Sherman Carter Barnhart and Branch Construction as presented, and that they be forwarded to the Kentucky Department of Education for review and approval.
I like that motion.
Uh, generally. Who, who made it?
Mr. Murray.
I'll second. Okay. Okay, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
I will, we'll know regarding middle school, uh, we'll have that working session, I think we said maybe three, at the January school board meeting, three, three-thirty, uh, we'll finalize that, but Ms. Wicker sent that special working meeting to where the, Mr. Smith and Kevin and everybody will go for schematic design for you all regarding middle school, and then January school board appreciation, so we thought we would break in between that and, and having all the mail, and then when we convene for, for regular school board meeting.
It's the best thing we do.
We like to even when we can.
All right, what everybody's been waiting for, January twenty twenty-one, return to in-person instruction.
Okay, there's certainly, uh, there are hope and intent that we get to return or offer the option. I want to make clear that parents for the duration of the current school year certainly have the opportunity for their student, uh, to have the virtual option throughout the entire school year, but the Kentucky Department of Education and the Kentucky Department of Public Health have made revisions, you all have that, that's in your board packet, and I've sent it all out to our faculty and staff, um, regarding the, what's referred to as the COVID-nineteen mode of instruction metrics for K-12 education. They have a little front sheet that kind of gets the highlights, and then what we're all familiar with is the green, yellow, orange, and red, uh, that we were anxious to look at each day, or actually, uh, every week, and how that's, how that's determined. One significant change from what the board, I, I'd asked you all to previously approve before, was that schools would not be in session when the school was, was red. The Kentucky Department of Public, uh, Health with KE, they have revised that guidance, and if you read on the, uh, on the, uh, right-hand column and that red column, they note terms such as more aggressive hybrid and consider remote learning when you're, when you're in red. Um, to be honest with you, with our current numbers right now, and, um, I'm, I'm fearful of just by default, Christmas gatherings and New Year's Eve gatherings, inevitably that will, that will happen, I look for air, uh, you know, probably for the entire region, they'll probably remain red. I wouldn't be surprised if they're not red for a continued period of time, and the, and the state and national entities predicted that throughout the winter months. But even if we are red, if we have, uh, faculty and staff available and things are manageable to where we can, it, it affords us the option to come back to school. One significant change that will be different, and we've already previously noted this, that when we come back to school and part of the governor's executive order that he's that when we come back to school and part of the governor's executive order that he's put in place, all of the, uh, guidance document is really incorporated now into the executive order. So before it was like, well, you know, just here's the guidance document, do the best you can with it. Now the absolute expectation is, is that you, all students will be six feet apart and, and et cetera, et cetera. So having said that, we, we previously decided anyway, our elementary schools could not socially distance, uh, well at all based upon the numbers that were coming in person. I mean, those classrooms looked like we wouldn't know COVID was a little bit a short time that we didn't go in person. You would know COVID was, was going around, because there are so many kids in our elementary schools. And that was concerning to everybody. But now they have to, uh, be socially distanced and that's six feet maintained. So they will, with your all's approval, they will also join that hybrid, just like our middle school and high school, where A through L, Monday and Tuesday. Everybody will remain virtual on Wednesday, will deep clean the buildings and allow some, uh, uh, extra attention to her, with our students remaining virtual. And then students with last name M through Z will go to school on Thursday and Friday. And we want to start that on January the nineteenth. Um, January the fourth, of course, ends Christmas break and, and we'll resume virtual instruction at that point. January the eleventh is when the governor's office and Kentucky Department of Public Health, they recommended nobody start back until January the eleventh. And people asked, oh, why are you, why are you all proposing, or why are you proposing, Michael, to start on January the nineteenth? Uh, met with principals, that will give us time even after New Year's Eve, a good two solid, uh, weeks to get past New Year's Eve gatherings and hopefully, uh, if there's been transmission and things like that, that we'll get an opportunity for the COVID to, to dissipate and we're moving further along, um, uh, hopefully with the vaccine getting, uh, amped up for, uh, school employees that they say maybe by February is hopefully earlier, maybe by February. And then athletic and extracurricular events will maintain like they are right now, approved and denied on a case-by-case basis, you know. Ballgames this year, our, uh, our basketball games, for instance, they're gonna look a lot different than they have in the past, because it just limited the capacity of people that could be in, that could be in attendance. So put all that in a, in a nutshell, I recommend that Russell County schools operate on a hybrid schedule. It's noted, once in-person classes resume January the nineteenth under the guidelines, under the guidelines of COVID-nineteen mode of instruction metrics for K-12 education issued by the Kentucky Department of Public Health and Kentucky Department of Education regarding classes, and authorize the superintendent to approve or deny participation in, in athletic events and extracurricular activities on a case-by-case basis. With your all's approval of that, of course, this is, this is no doubt. Make, make no mistake, this will be a fluid situation this year. I would absolutely hope that we could go back on school on January nineteenth and stay in school. But inevitably with staffing changes or staffing shortages and things like that, uh, I hope we don't, but I can see a period of time again that we would be forced to remain virtual for X amount of time. Uh, hopefully not one thing that will help when it comes to substitute teachers, and Ms. Bowles has been working with me on this, is that the state did pass an educational professional standards board to where, back in my day, if I was doing my student teaching, then the principal would not pull me to cover a class. Now, um, incorporated into the regulations that, uh, a traditional student teacher can be pulled for five days outside of their cooperating teacher. So we just, you know, Mr. Kazoo's doing his student teaching, and he's maybe in a P-five school, uh, Jamesville Elementary School, and he's in kindergarten class. And I'm the principal, and I might need him in a second grade class that day, because there are no subs available. I could pull him and say, Mr. Kazoo, I'm gonna need you, and he's gonna be solo in that second grade, uh, class. Now, there's some things he has to do behind that. He has to apply with us as, as our district to be employed as a emergency certified substitute teacher. Uh, but that's called intermittent, uh, subbing, where we could pull the, the student teacher for five days. If it's for an extended period of time, then we have to have some conversations with the university or the college and the teacher prep program to what, to what that, uh, that student teacher is attending. But that will, there's no doubt in my mind that the principals will have to do some of that with our student teachers, just because of shortage of subs, that that may keep us in operation to where, uh, if we do have a lot of staff that are quarantined and we need warm bodies in the building. You know, our staff have been phenomenal. They can, they can teach from home, they can work from home, uh, but it still takes X amount of warm bodies in the building if we are in person. That's gonna take that, that to work. I do, I mean, that, that might not be an ideal situation, but I, I appreciate the standards board, uh, being creative and thinking of things, uh, to help school districts, because I certainly think that that will be one of them. Uh, I, I'll say again, and inevitably we can all agree, we all want students, students are gonna perform best, uh, when they are in person. But make no mistake in the amount of effort and work that our faculty, staff administration have put forth during this time. You know, um, students have not got maybe everything that they needed. And I saw a good toast the other day, they said, no one has got everything that they needed. And, and that, that's accurate, that goes for our employees too. Our employees want to be with students. But having said that, we have to balance that for safety and, and efficiency and everything else of coming back in person. So we want, we wanna be back in person, I wanna be back in person. Uh, you know, every, everybody wants to be back in person, but I wanna do that where I can feel really comfortable with our employees and look families in the eye and say, we're doing that as safely a, a, as we possibly can. So that's my recommendation. I will obviously implement and execute whatever, uh, the board's decision is. But that would be my recommendation, not to return back on, on in-person until January nineteenth at the earliest. Obviously follow that mode of metric, there'll be other times that I'll have to call up. Um, but all the principals are, are in agreement with this and, you know, I hope that gives us time to get in school and then stay in school.
That was a big topic today that parents are going down to school.
Oh, sure.
When are we going to go, these kids coming back?
Okay.
But I understand your point.
I already told Kobe Lee this, I hope, I hope he's back there January nineteenth. And you know, even then with the hybrid, but that's the best we can do, because we can't take kids back in school and have, you know, thirty-plus kids, twenty-plus kids in one classroom and social distancing. There is a lot of, Dr. Miles and I briefly talked about this the other day, and I'll be brief. Uh, but there is a lot of emerging research that shows that students, although they may be asymptomatic, and they may be, you know, or maybe exhibiting mild symptoms, they still do not spread it as much as adults, uh, do. And they think part of that might be just the respiratory function and how they expel the droplets and things like that. And a big factor of that is consistent wearing of, of face coverings and masks. I could, I could talk all evening about the amount of work that our faculty and staff have, have put in to, to doing the best that they absolutely can, uh, for, during this virtual instruction. I witnessed it with Kobe Lee, and, and that's just, I know he's in sixth grade, but I can guarantee you, uh, that parallels for preschool through twelfth grade, you know.
It's a sad situation.
It is.
Okay, you need a motion?
Yes, please.
I'll make the motion to resume classes on the nineteenth and operate on that schedule as written.
I'll second it.
Dude, with the fact that he said it's written, he did say it's written.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's written.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Okay, love.
Uh, Mr. Murray?
As you recall, back a couple months ago, we had something to vote, uh, I've always known we can, uh, I've talked to several parents, and I know a lot of those are in favor of school going back. Uh, my grandkids say they want to go back. I know the greaters have one, which ain't good. But if it wasn't safe going back two months ago, because it was in the red, I can't see that we'd be safe going back into red in January unless the number's changing awful lot. So on that, I'd like to vote no still on that. I've not changed my mind on that.
I understand.
Which I know I'd have popped to vote.
No, I understand.
That's it.
Uh, Ms. Wilson?
I'm reluctantly saying yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Me too, I don't, I don't agree, but I understand. So I'll say yes.
Uh, Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes.
Yes, four hundred, yes. And I bet, uh, I sent you all those notes, I made it to our faculty and staff, the ones that, uh, could get on a virtual meeting, totally wise when we proposed, you know, and they sent them those back to the meeting. And just an update on the, uh, on the survey, it's a little bit, uh, we've had over four hundred responses so far on the COVID-nineteen survey, and it's a little bit over half of employees are favoring, uh, I could look at that again real quick later, but a little bit over half are going to take the survey. Uh, people are changing their minds.
Vaccines.
Pardon me?
Not take the survey, take the vaccine.
That's right, yeah, I'm sorry, yes. Four hundred and something out of our employees, and that's cloud subs and coaches and everything. Uh, a little bit over half said they will take the vaccine and, uh, the other ones are probably. But I have had, uh, the only ones that I've had change, and it's been several, they're changing their vote from no, uh, to yes. And by December the thirtieth, I have to submit the rosters to the state. And if you, if you're not on that roster as a yes at that point, then you will not get the vaccine. You'll have to just get it, we've been told, when it's available to the general public, uh, not under that as educator and, and, or employee of the school district, you talk to everybody on that. So I really, I, I've told people that, you know, to do the survey as far as that concerns is voluntary, to take the, take the vaccine is voluntary, but I can't help you later if I, if I don't have the name on the roster. So that's just independent, independent decisions. I appreciate that.
Now, we wouldn't be on the, we wouldn't be on that.
The, they, that is a question that they're researching, but they not told us about.
I agree with you, Ted.
Yeah. But that question was asked, Miss Joy, if board members can't do it on, and they told us they'd be, they would tell, they would get us an answer on that. Substitute teachers, student teachers, coaches that are not otherwise employed, all of those folks are listed. Yeah. They, they said though that initially, you know, I may not have a number of, of doses to do all the points at once. They said we would prioritize the first round maybe, it depends on the number of doses that we give.
Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school schedule calendar.
Um, this is, uh, only for discussion only tonight, had to be on the, on the agenda, and then you will be presented for you all to vote on it at the January school board meeting. Uh, we've had a great committee this year, we had, uh, Leonard, Miss Danram, we had two meetings, and that was held via Zoom, and we also broadcasted on, on YouTube. But KRS one fifty-eight dot zero seven zero, recent part prior to adopting a school calendar, the local board of education shall appear for discussion, that's tonight. The school district calendars committing recommendations and the recommendation of the superintendent at a meeting of the local board of education. During a subsequent meeting of the local board of education, the local board shall adopt the school calendar for the upcoming school year that establishes the opening and closing dates of the school term, beginning and ending dates of each school term, um, student attendance days and days on which school will be dismissed. The local board may schedule days for breaks in the school calendar that shall not be counted as a part of the minimum, uh, school term. This draft calendar is attached, two things that, uh, we made a change based upon our survey data. And, and, uh, Mr. Unian, you can speak if you, if you were a member of that committee, but a lot of, uh, some folks recommended that, uh, and we voted on that, uh, about being off on Good Friday. And so our recommendation to you all includes Good Friday that year, this year. And also, um, I thought this was really neat how, uh, some of our teachers, they look at the calendars really well, but that date in March, when time changes, uh, this year I think it's on March the thirteenth, or March the twelfth, or March thirteenth. But, so we had a instructional planning day, originally, I think we had it beforehand, being on Friday. Yeah, and so now we're gonna have it on the Monday. So it was recommended that maybe during that time change and students losing hours of sleep, let them get a little, uh, additional day to get adjusted. And so we just flopped that day over to, uh, March the fourteenth. And so my point without, around that is, the, that was input that people gave us that we made a recommendation or changed to that, uh, with a great group of, uh, faculty and employees, administration, and parents, and Mr. Unian was a part of that dark process. Mr. Unian, do you have anything that, that you want to speak to on the calendar committee?
No, you said it all.
Okay, okay. So this is, this is just for your all, uh, the, the discussion tonight. Anybody has anything to question with it, but the seventeenth to the twenty-sixth, uh, I know that's, seems like a far away out, and we'll be there before you know it. Had a viewer, uh, and then incorporates the, uh, as you all told us to do from going on, uh, Becker's Day. Of course, there's no school on that day.
And March day was put in because there was no day, day off in there, and every other month had one, but, uh...
Give the students a three-day, three-day weekend.
It just gets, March gets awfully long.
Yep. So I appreciate everybody's input. I'm, the overwhelming majority of people just out of bat said, hey, this looks good, let's roll with it. So that, so I really appreciate everybody's input on the calendar. So it'll be at the January school board meeting, uh, for your all's approval. And bringing it to you in December has been a recommendation from years past, because a lot of folks make their, they've put in for vacation days and all that. They said, can we get that calendar earlier? And I heard just today that Miss Danram, I think it was, maybe Miss Delk, had taken a phone call about when, when spring break for the twenty-one, twenty-two calendar, uh, school year is.
Uh, I'm hoping that also, uh, let it resume its... It is the, uh, seventeen? Was there something said to wait? Or the closest date to...
Oh, that was even the, the variable instructional, student instructional here, the twenty-sixth. Definitely closest to that one, yeah. Yep. Well, there's no vote, uh, doubting at the January school board meeting.
Okay, revision policy zero eight point two-three-two-three, social media.
The Russell County Board of Education policy zero eight point two-three-two-three is more restrictive than Kentucky School Board's recommended policy, as noted before at our first reading. Our current policy prohibits the use of social networking sites, and, and this really came out. To change this policy, our, a lot of our school librarians drive their school's social media sites, and they're prohibited during use of school resources to post that stuff. Talking with K S B A, and they said, you all really just need to go with our recommended policy. And so that's what this one is, and we've talked about that at last month's meeting. But this is the second reading to which we actually may need, uh, a motion and, and vote to, to accept the policy as presented. And again, this is the model policy from the Kentucky School Boards Association.
I recommend if we will have a revision of the social media policy. I'll second.
Gerald.
Who seconded?
Gerald.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes.
There are hundreds, quite a change right there, Mr. Bell. He's been, uh, asked about that again the other day.
Mental health specialist job description.
Okay, this is really great, and it was with funds allocated from the legislature. Uh, we were guaranteed the funding, and this is not coming out of our general fund or any other fund. This is specific funds from the state, uh, and it will be through the June thirtieth of, of this current school year. And it's gonna be up to the legislature to see whether or not this particular, uh, spot is funded again. But it's to provide, uh, school-based mental health services and lawful activity stated in the School Safety and Resiliency Act, and what we're all familiar with Senate Bill one, and then Senate Bill eight, and in the session of twenty-twenty. The attached job description, Ms. Danram and I have, have worked on this, uh, looking at some other districts and what, and the poll, and the, uh, job description that they use, and a, uh, salary schedule that accompanies it. So we've received forty-three thousand ninety-five dollars for this position, and the salary will, of course, be pro-rated for the remainder of this school year. And then if we get to fund the position and keep the position, then that, that position can be going on again for the twenty-one, uh, twenty-two school year. So it's a great, it's a big need, and that's why the legislature, uh, designated the funds for this. And we can see this being, uh, really someone, to use Miss Dan, Miss Danram's term, someone gets in there and broker services, and there's some folks that, uh, you know, that would be ready to hit this. So it's not a, it's not an education degree, it's nothing, it's not something that you can have a teaching degree and do it, because it is a mental health specialist. And so we're looking for those folks that have that license in counseling, mental health, that type of, uh, that type of position. that type of, that type of position.
So it's just being guaranteed for one year?
It is just guaranteed through June 30th.
Well, that'll, it'll keep on.
It's not even one year.
No. But at 205 days, so it depends on whether or not the funding, there's a lot of support for it, I know that, the funding. But this person, I think, will be, and our principals and folks know about it, will be a great asset for us.
It will be. I'm worried that this will.
Mr. Hoover said he feels like that money will be there to keep it going.
It will.
Particularly now, because so much gets to you.
People stay in the house till noon, even I'm crazy.
So I recommend approval of the job description and the salary schedule for this.
And I made that motion that would approve of the mental health specialist job description.
Ms. Joy's second. Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Being first to use it. Regular local school board meetings.
So KRS 61.820 calls for each board of education to hold at least one regular meeting each month at a time and place fixed by the board, and KRS 61.820 requires that the schedule of regular meetings be made available to the public. For this, you know, we normally rotate around schools, but due to COVID and social distancing, not knowing how we're set up, for this year, we have proposed that we do have all the meetings here, just because we can entertain a lot of, a lot of folks in attendance and not have to think about making all those arrangements in the school, and, and hopefully, you know, COVID goes away or it's significantly mitigated. So I recommend the adoption of 21-22 schedule of regular meeting dates for each month, beginning with the month of February 21, and concluding January of 2022. That each monthly board meeting be scheduled in advance and announced to the public, all other meetings would be considered, special call meetings and a copy of the scheduled meetings with a noted time period are attached and become part of minutes. One, two things I want to point out that we always do, that last, we always have two meetings in June, that's not a special meeting if it's right here and it's scheduled, so we have one in June, and we typically always have that at noon on the last day. And then for the months of January and February, we always have it the fourth Monday because of the holidays, President Martin Luther King and President's Day.
Yeah.
And they are held at 5:00. I recommend approval of that scheduling.
Definitely right, no, we're just going to do it.
Ms. Whitaker said just somebody do it.
Well, what they're doing.
Mr. Murray, hang in.
And Joy's second.
Oh, I can hear them. Okay, all right, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Educational leave of absence.
Christina Bunch is requested educational leave of absence without pay effective January 5th, 2021, and will continue for seven days to allow her to complete her student teaching during the spring 21 semester, barring weather closures or other unforeseen school closing, her time will conclude the first week of April 21. This is great, when one of our employees, Ms. Bunch, has went on back to school and finished her, about to finish her classes, and then she'll be ready for her student teaching. So I recommend that this board, this educational leave of absence be approved.
I'll make the motion, we give Ms. Bunch a educational leave of absence.
I'll say.
They're trying to take over.
Who's second?
They're trying to take over.
Mr. Murray, Joy's going to have a stage of coo here tonight. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Her and Gerald.
Ms. Joy?
Yes.
Ms. Brenda?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker? I knew this was going to be a long meeting, we're kind of getting slacked at.
Contracts.
We missed the starter.
Literate them some agreements.
We missed the starter.
The follow-up contracts, we ran some agreements, are challenging to review with NECO referral services and things for that, what we do in the past with counseling services. And then with the surrogate parent services, this is different, and Mr. Hoover had worked with us on this, this agreement. Surrogate parents serve for students that are in special education, and they might be a ward of the state, they might be in foster care, and they have to have somebody, they, they do not have another state agency serve as their parent in making educational decisions, and so it's referred to as a surrogate parent by the Individuals and Disabilities Education Act. And we have some parents that spend a lot of time and serve in that role for us, and this offers a little contract and services of agreement where they can be reimbursed, and it's paid for through the federal funds for that program with that. And Ms. Dick will, then has to provide training for them, and, and we can reimburse them for that. And then the huddle, return to play agreement, currently our football uses this, this program, this will be paid out of athletic funds, it's not general fund, the high schools' athletic funds will pay this, but it, this, this huddle, return to play agreement, will open it up to all of our varsity sports at the high school, for instance, volleyball can make use of it, our boys and girls' basketball can make use to, make, make use of it, and especially during this COVID time, folks can buy a subscription and log on and watch a game from that with, with this agreement with that.
How much money that.
I'm sorry?
How much money is that league part of law?
A bunch. That's a school, yeah. Because we don't have a game, yeah. And like basketball, Ms. Brenda, like I said, it's going to be so severely restricted on, you know, people even coming into the games. But there's still faith in that, the, the school act, like, like, I'm sorry. So I recommend approval of memorandum of agreements and contracts, me and Ben failed to put that on there. That's been through my.
Go ahead, Dick, they let them, they stole that. I make that, I make, I recommend approval of memorandum of agreements and approve about the board attorney.
And I'll say.
This is a turf.
We're in competition.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.